Alexis Volgarrison, welcome to the special October meeting of the RTM. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's evening, the reading of the call shall be omitted. I've asked Susan Fahey, Chairwoman of District 12, to lead us in the pledge. Would you please rise as Ms. Fahey leads us in the pledge?
I'm your lead.
Okay, you lead us.
... and to the Republic for Richard Sand, one nation, under God, in the physical liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I apologize for assigning you to the wrong district. It's Fahey of 11, not 12. As this is a special meeting, we are not going to take up the minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting last week. We will do that at the December meeting. Before we launch into our call, I just want to remind everyone who's participating online that if you have a technical issue, the phone number is (203) 992-8383. And if anyone has an issue with their clicker in the room, please come to the clerk's desk, and we'll be happy to assist you. That brings us to the call for tonight's evening. I notified the membership that I would recommend that we consider the items on our agenda this evening by establishing two groups of combined items. The first group of combined items, Group 1, consists of Items 1, 2, and 3, which are all relating to Central Middle School. And the second group consists of Items 4 and 5, which relate to the soil remediation at GHS. In order to combine items, we need a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine for voting purposes the items in Group 1 and in Group 2? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and combine for voting purposes the items in Groups 1 and 2. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and requires a 2/3 majority to pass. Is there any objection to the rules to combine for voting purposes Groups 1 and 2? We can do it by unanimous consent. If anyone objects, we will take a record vote. Does anyone object to combining the rules? Okay. We would like to take a record vote, then. It will not need a 2/3 vote, Ms. Nusinovich. It will need a majority of the membership, which is 116. And I anticipate that it's likely that it will get 116 based off of the committee reports that we received. So, Craig, could you please prepare the record vote? This is a motion to suspend the rules to combine for voting purposes Groups 1 and 2. Did you get the vote, please? Okay. This is a motion to suspend the rules to combine for voting purposes. You would be combining two groups of... You would be creating two groups of combined calendars, Groups 1 and 2. Group 1 has Items 1, 2, and 3 in it. Groups 2 has Items 4 and 5 in it. If you are in favor of combining... Of suspending the rules to combine those items, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Jude Collins, do you have an issue?
When we're done voting, we can hold the vote for the later part of the meeting.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. When you...
The votes are supposed to arrive late at our meeting. If you can hold your vote for the later part of the meeting, we can get a closer look.
I will hold the vote open per the request of Mr. Collins, whose district came out a little bit late, I guess, for an additional 30 seconds, and we'll allow you time to check, Well, then, you would have adopted the resolution. You would not have passed the bonding, and the bonding can be brought back at a later date. It can be brought back in December. Mr. Collins, are you okay with your clicker?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have an objection before I close the vote? Okay, we are going to close the vote. Okay. The motion to suspend the rules to combine for voting purposes are to consent calendar items... Are to combine calendar items. Those in favor, 162; opposing, 11; abstaining, 0. That item has carried. Craig, could you please show the vote, please? Mr. Broadhurst, I believe you have something for us.
Madam Moderator, fellow members, I move that we limit debate to 2 minutes per motion with 5 minutes reserved for the proponent and principal opponent of any motion.
Is there a second? The item has been moved and seconded and is now before us. A motion to limit debate is not itself debatable and does require a 2/3 majority to pass. I will call for a record vote on this. Craig, could you please prepare the slide that says "Motion to Limit Debate"? Okay. It's a motion to limit debate to 2 minutes per speaker per motion with 5 minutes for the proponent and principal opponent, the latter to be determined by the moderator. It does require a 2/3 to pass. If you are in favor of that motion, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, could you please open the... You have about 30 seconds left. This is a good time to vote if you intend to do so. Okay, that concludes the 2-minute window. Is there anyone who is expressing an issue in the room with their clicker? I do not hear any complaints, so I am going to have Craig close the vote. The result on the Broadhurst motion to limit debate, those in favor, 165; opposed, 10; abstaining, 3. That motion has carried. Could you please show the vote, Craig? Okay. That brings us to item number 1, the first item in our Group 1 of the combined calendar. Mr. Kelly, are you introducing that resolution? Joe Kelly, the chairman of the Board of Education. All right. Well, I only need one person to read it, but you're welcome to come up together if you...
So, Madam Moderator, item number 1, to consider and act upon the following resolution requested by the Central Middle School Building Committee, approved by the Board of Estiment and Taxation, resolved that the sum of $42,017,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated and to be added to the following account, be as in boy, (6801) 389-595-6024336, known as Central Middle School.
Thank you. May a member please move the adoption of the resolution. The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we hear the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with Brooks Harris, Chair of the Finance Committee. This is just item 1.
Hello. Finance met for 3 and 1/2 hours to discuss this most important topic. It's hard to condense it down to a short report, so while depth on every topic is impractical, I listened to the replay at least twice to make sure I was not misrepresenting the proceedings. Construction of the project is scheduled to begin in October of next year and be completed by June of 2026, with occupancy expected for the '26-'27 school year. Demolition will be completed on the old school, and the new fields will be planted by November 2026. When asked why a vote was needed so quickly, Mr. Turner noted that because of inflation, which plagues our economy, any delay would mean the project will be more expensive. Mr. Turner expressed confidence that if we begin construction by October of 2024, such increases are included in our appropriation. Mr. Turner had stated that the cost of financing is rising, so we had to begin at once. A member of Finance noted that the forward yield curve is flat for the next several years, in 5 years, which refutes that contention, but this is as well understood by people outside of Finance as the team model is understood by people outside of education. The Edspec voted on by the BOE called for 110,000 square-foot building size. It was later determined that there was an error in calculating the square footage, and it would really be 125,000 square feet, but no revote was taken. In addition, Edspec lays out the required classrooms and other spaces, but it does not prescribe the configuration of the school. While there is frustration that we must overbuild our school to accommodate 660 to 770 students when the current population is under 500 and projected to decline, members appear to accept that this is a consequence of the team model and cannot be avoided. The Edspec allows the Building Committee to recommend any geometry as long as the requisite classrooms and other spaces are included. The simplest geometry would be a rectangular geometry with a second floor built on top of the first floor. More complex and expensive would be a fan geometry, where the second floor sits only partially on the first floor but is rotated, so the other side of the second floor is built into the rocky elevation at the back of the property. This configuration also requires additional engineering study and design, but allows for a larger roof area for more solar panels. In addition, the Building Committee elected to house the mechanicals inside the building rather than placing them on the roof, adding to the square footage and cost, but increasing the amount of solar panels the roof could accommodate. The rocky area into which the second floor will be embedded will require blasting or drilling, which could be a concern given the proximity to CMS, which is structurally vulnerable. Mr. Turner indicated that engineering study would be conducted, so the cost and safety of this aspect could be determined. I assume we will not proceed if this is deemed dangerous. In addition, this building is built in a water runoff area and will require water remediation. This means, at the very least, we will have to build a retaining wall, cut an access road to the back end of the property, and implement a drainage system. Mr. Turner indicated an engineering study on that will also be done in the future to identify the cost and ensure proper runoff. One member noted the majority of cost overruns at MESA occurred because we did not identify the cost of water remediation until after we appropriated initial funding. None of these would be concerns with a simpler rectangular design. Importantly, the more complex geometry of the fan layout could lead to construction delays. People urging us to approve this appropriation expect a great new school will be available to them for the '26-'27 school year, and that choice reduces the likelihood of that happening. Aside from geometry, we also face unknown costs for the sewer system. We will not be able to run a direct line from the current line to the new building because the access holes would run right through the ball fields. We likely will have to run the line under Indian Rock Road and up the property parallel to Orchard Street. We do not yet have an engineering assessment to do this, nor do we know the cost. If we find the soil under Indian Rock Road is rocky, it could be more expensive. Mr. Turner enumerated $17 million of contingencies built into this funding request, representing about 15% of the total cost. Mr. Turner noted that absent supply chain interruptions, he is quite confident this should be sufficient to complete the project. Given the cost items we know will be needed but aren't included in this appropriation or aren't fully identified, this contingency may not be sufficient. I asked when we should pencil in the first interim appropriation on this, but Mr. Turner said it was too early to schedule that yet. Projections indicate to fund this appropriation, we will have to raise taxes, increase outstanding... This is what we discussed in Finance now. Projections indicate to fund this appropriation, we will have to raise taxes, increase our outstanding debt, or both. Our AAA rating, though, is not in jeopardy. We have tremendous debt capacity. The item was approved 10-0-1 with one absent... Excuse... With one absent. The abstainer on this vote indicated willingness to vote yes, subject to a few outstanding questions, which could be clarified before Monday's RTM meeting. I subsequently talked to the person who abstained, and he intends to vote yes on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spilo, are you next? Michael Spilo, Chairman of the Public Works Committee.
Good evening. Public Works took up only Item 1 on the call. We posted a separate notice for our meeting because there is no formal process for holding a joint meeting in the RTM rules and no provisions for voting for an overall chair as required under Robert's rules. Joint meetings also don't provide time for all committee members to participate as fully because the total time allotted is divided amongst the larger membership. Joint meetings are also difficult for remote participants because in-person participants are further away from the phones and are difficult to hear, and because remote participants have to sign into separate meetings.
Mr. Spilo, are...
I'm explaining why we had only one meeting. I'll be brief.
You only have one meeting because you failed to notice the meeting properly.
Joint meetings are crowded and discouraged. Due to the rushed timeframe and last-minute posting of the final call, and because Public Works officers were inadvertently left off several emails, Public Works submitted a revised agenda at 4:30. This was within FOIA...
Mr. Spilo, this is not your report. This is not your report.
This is part of my report. I've gotten several questions on this, Madam Chair, from committee members and the community at large, so I thought I would answer them here.
Really?
Yes. Meaning my district, not so much.
Well, then, I hope that you've done a good job communicating with them that it was your inability to post a meeting correctly.
Are we having a dialogue, guys? Unusual circumstances. Thank you.
We're here for a report on Item 1, not on what you're meeting.
Correct.
Well, our meeting was only on Item 1.
Mr. Spilo, if you could confine your report to the actual events that happened at your meeting, I think everyone would appreciate that.
At the Public Works meeting, after the joint meeting, which all of Public Works members attended, we were joined by Mr. Turner, Ms. Costin, Mr. Rosetti of the CMS Building Committee. Discussion of Public Works revolved primarily around the reasons for the offset second-floor design. Mr. Rosetti indicated that he felt the primary benefit was easy access to the outdoors for lessons on science and nature. Ms. Costin indicated she believed there was no way to fit the building on the property without obtaining a variance from P&amp;Z. Committee members noted that a variance from P&amp;Z was needed anyway and had been obtained, and that the costs of the building into the hill are significant and direct access to the outdoors can be a safety hazard. Discussion also revolved around whether the Building Committee considered other designs. Ms. Costin indicated that 8 other designs were considered, but acknowledged that 6 of those were variations on the final design. Ms. Costin also confirmed that no pricing information was ever obtained for other building configurations, and while there were initial estimates for the other designs from the architects, those costs did not enter into the decision process. The vote on Item 1 was 8-1-0 with 2 districts absent. 3 of the yes votes indicated they were reluctant yes votes. The remainder voted... The member voting no felt the school was much larger than needed, the design was unnecessarily complicated and expensive, and there were open safety issues and planning and zoning issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's going next? I believe Education and Public Work, BOC, took this up. I'm sorry, Ms. Krasnor, the time? It's just committee reports. They're untimed unless someone does make a motion for that.
Well, I'll tell you what. Mr. Harris did such a good job with the finance. As he was doing it, I sat here scratching off half of my report, so we can keep it a little briefer. So, I'm just going to go through the highlights of what I have. The education... One thing that he did not mention, which I thought might be important to everybody, the Education Committee was part of a joint meeting co-chaired with the Finance, Budget Overview Legislative and Rules Committees. Also in attendance was the Town Services Committee. The purpose of the meeting, as you all know, is to discuss call items 1 through 5 for the special RTM meeting. To address Items 1 to 3, we had in attendance several guests, the Central Middle School Building Committee members, Tony Turner, Chairman Claire Killigan, Vice Chairperson Stephanie Cow, Board of Education members Christina Downey, Laura Costin, Central Middle School Principal Tom Healy, School Superintendent Dr. Tony Jones, Town Controller Peter Minersky, and PTA Council President John Fisher. So, we had a big representation of people. It was a very informative meeting, which, as I mentioned, was discussed pretty thoroughly by the Finance Committee. Some of the things that I kept in my little report was that we discussed in detail the size of the school, and the explanation as to the size was important due to the mandated education specs. There was also discussion as to why we needed the special meeting right now instead of delaying it a couple of weeks. The explanation was offered by State Representative Stephen Meskers, who explained that to receive state funding for any grants, we had a June 2023 deadline. Since we're past that deadline, he needs to present a special legislative request in November, where he will explain the urgency of replacing a school with an estimated 3 more years of life. He stressed the importance of passing this now and passing the bonding now so that he and the other state representatives can do their work. Following the joint meeting, the Education Committee met privately to discuss the issues. We discussed them in pretty good detail at our meeting. Was Claire Killigan, the Central Middle School Vice Chair, the School Principal Tom Healy, Tony Jones, the Superintendent of Schools, and PTA Council President John Fisher. They all had very informative and detailed answers. One thing that stuck out in my mind was where John Fisher, the PTA Council President, informed our committee that there is overwhelming support from thousands of members of the PTA, of the school PTAs for the Central Middle School Building Project. We then voted on the 3 items. I'm only going to discuss item number 1. Our vote was 9-1-0. The delegate from D-10 voted no because she felt that the proposal was oversized and overpriced, and the money should be spent elsewhere for areas like elsewhere teacher funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jansen, Chairwoman of the BOC. And I trust, Ms. Jansen, you have somewhat amended your minutes to be inclusive of all of your members' comments, correct?
Good evening. I want to start by restating what has been said many times by your BOC committee members in various settings during many budget decisions over the last 2 years. The BOC has been and continues to be very supportive of the Central Middle School renovation project. Your BOC has previously approved $65.5 million appropriation in 2023 and $2.5 million in 2022, for a total of $70 million. Your Budget Overview Committee is now asked, along with other RTM members, to deliberate and vote in a rushed emergency fashion on a new Central Middle School project cost of $112 million, which represents the largest capital project ever funded in Greenwich. Further, the current Board of Ed interim appropriation request for an additional $42 million to the already $70 million approved by the RTM is also the largest interim appropriation in RTM history. In fact, as a reference on that $42 million figure is large projects like MESA and New Lebanon School that were vetted for years before approving. Many BOC members expressed dissatisfaction with the lack of time to deliberate and vote on the $42 million interim appropriation. RTM members were only given the explanatory comments containing 80 pages before... The day before the combined meeting. Further missing from the explanatory comments to the RTM were the essential planning and zoning municipal improvement reports that outline P&amp;Z's assessment in key land use areas, namely sewers, drainage, wetlands, trees, rock ledges, building height, and square footage. The central question asked was why the emergency special meeting was called. State Representative Meskers, who was in attendance at the combined meeting, asserted that immediately after the RTM's vote, he will personally be pursuing Greenwich to be included in the June 2023 grant application list. He indicated he will justify the reconsideration based on the poor condition of the school. Meskers emphasized it is mandatory for him Meskers emphasized it is mandatory for him to have the RTM's approved bonding resolution. He also indicated he will be filing with the state in parallel a size waiver, application to increase the CMS project reimbursement rate from the current six point nine percent, which is seven point one million, to ten percent, which is eleven point two million reimbursement. If the grant office does not allow Greenwich's request for an exception to be placed on the twenty twenty-three bonding list, Meskers will pursue the normal legislative process filing in June twenty twenty-four. The RTM learned many important facts in reading the P and Z MI report that outlines many large-scale deliverables before the final site plan is approved. Tony Turner confirmed, apart from supply chain issues, the two areas most of concern is water and rock, which was represented heavily in the MI report. When it came to the BOC vote, many of the BOC, uh, in the breakout session, uh, once again expressed dissatisfaction with the poor RTM decision process, governance, and astounding issues in deciding the new school renovation project with the increased one hundred and twelve million dollar price tag. However, overwhelmingly, despite the numerous issues, the BOC members want the CMS school to remain on a fast track and meet the community's strong desire for a renovated school as soon as possible. The BOC vote was seven, one, zero, with District Two voting against, and Districts one, four, five, and eight absent. District Two voted against because the interim appropriation was brought to us at short notice with lots of information to absorb and because it was too open-ended with so many contingencies. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our committee reports for this item. We'll now open it up to our speakers. Our first speaker will be the proponent of this item. I don't know if it's Mr. Kelly or Mr. Turner. All right, team effort. Yeah, they, they will be awarded five minutes. You'll have five minutes to deliver your remarks.
Good evening, Alexis. Good evening, RTM. I'm Joe Kelly. I'm the chairman of your Board of Education. This is Tony Turner. He's the chairman of our CMS Building Committee. We, Board of Education, one hundred percent supports this appropriation. We hundred, one hundred percent support this project. I'm going to speak about my involvement in this project a little bit. Tony has me on a one-minute clock, so let me know, Tony. Uh, I just checked. I've, I have had over two hundred meetings regarding Central Middle School in the last three years, dating back to when we first discovered there was problems with Central Middle School. Dan Watson, our facilities manager, brought me down and showed me, uh, these problems with the building. Uh, we realized that was a big problem. We fixed them temporarily, and, uh, we moved on. Then we had our feasibility when we went dozens and dozens of meetings about the feasibility of what we want to do here with this, well, we never had feasibility, sorry. We, uh, uh, we then met on the, uh, the ed specs. So our ed specs, we met dozens of meetings about what our students needed to best have in this school. Uh, and we came up after meeting after meeting with our professionals, our advisors, telling us what we needed to do, what we were required to do. Uh, we met with teachers. We met with, uh, we met with the principal. Uh, we met with our parents. Uh, we met with dozens of people and decided what we needed to do, what we were required to do, and put that forward. Then came the Building Committee. We, so the Building Committee went then dozens of times with architects, engineers, with builders. We went over this hundreds of meetings about what had to be done. I believe this is the project that has to move forward. Tony Turner, you're up.
How, how do you beat that? I don't know. Ladies and gentlemen, at this point in the funding process, I stand before you to say just a, just a few things. First of all, thank you. Um, you all have invested a tremendous amount of time in a short period of time to think about this, uh, this project. You've been very discerning, uh, and that has not been taken for granted, uh, by anyone. I also stand before you to ask for your vote of support for the interim funding request. And the other is to confirm to you that the Building Committee always has given you the truth. We believe that the people in power require the truth, and that's you. And we have always provided that to everyone. There've been a lot of misinformation and false statements about this project. The handout you received at the door tonight corrects the record. I ask that you please review it as it gives straight facts on the characteristics of the school, its twenty-two acre campus, its costs, and its timeline. It's a very, very easy read. The Building Committee, in partnership with the Board of Education, we agree on the numbers. The numbers are hard numbers. And we believe that value engineering is a process that will go to the end of this project. It is not an event that you only have at the beginning. And you have our word on that. The project has been vetted by a third party that is respected in our town and to whom all professionals responded in writing. We found no changes necessary. You have the hard numbers, and they get re-verified every two weeks. We've coordinated with multiple times on all of the town departments, including fire and police. We've looked at eight building options, nine site options. The cost plan includes a total of nineteen million, twenty-eight thousand dollars in contingencies, and that includes escalation. Literally tonight, the world is watching this vote, knowing that the number one reason people move to Greenwich is quality of schools. Every real estate firm tonight that, that serves our market around the globe will be talking first thing tomorrow morning about the vote of the RTM on the Central Middle School tonight. Hopefully, they will be able to say tomorrow, yeah, guess what our town legislature did last night? We just committed to a new middle school for a hundred and twelve million dollars. Whether or not they can say this is completely up to you. It is completely up to you. But tonight I invite you to, with me, to take one step further. We've had up to this point supermajority votes, if not unanimous votes, on this project. The Board of Selectmen unanimous in its referral to the P and Z. A supermajority vote by the Board of Education, the BET, the Building Committee, RTM Committees, Education, Finance, BOC, and Public Works. All underscoring community-wide support. It's clear that these boards and committees know the truth when they see it. So wouldn't it be great tonight? Just grand, really? If the real estate community could say tomorrow that the RTM passed it tonight by a supermajority? Let's bring this to reality, please. We seek your support.
Thank you. Mr. Spilo will be recognized as the principal opponent, not as an individual, of course, but representing, I'm assuming you will announce who you are representing in opposition. You can tell them you don't. I would appreciate it, Mr. Spilo, if you could use the microphone and not try and have personal banter.
Good evening. As an entrepreneur, I'm used to independent thinking. I've often spoken and stood for what I believe where others fear to go. In nineteen ninety-three, I approached Microsoft about developing a technology that would ease a transition to Windows. The head of Microsoft Engineering for Windows told me the idea was impossible and that I was wasting my time. He was an expert, had lots of fancy engineering degrees, but I went ahead on my own. When Windows ninety-five launched, I had the technology ready and patented. I ended up licensing the technology to Logitech, Symantec, Toshiba, and others, and I even licensed it back to Microsoft. Entrepreneurship is quintessentially American. And one of the many great things about our society and our country is that my story isn't unusual. It's why we have five times more startups than Europe, hundred times more than either Russia or China.
Is, is this relevant to-
Yes, it is. I'm getting there.
How you're opposing, representing your constituents?
Am I going to have my time back? It is. One of the- America is founded on free thinking and brave people who stood up to bullying. Think freely. You know that this school is too large. It is designed to accommodate kids who haven't been born from homes which haven't been built and may never be built. You know that this design is wasteful and expensive and meant to increase solar generation so that we can pretend building is net zero ready, even though net zero is impossible. Worse, this comes at a huge environmental cost for far more concrete, two point four acres of trees cut, blasted rock, paved over land, uh, each of which individually dwarf the environmental benefit. You also know that it all comes at a cost which negates by a very wide margin any savings from the energy, solar panels. You know that opponents missed the June twenty twenty-three deadline, which they claimed was a must-hit date, and now they claim the original target date can be worked around. But only if we hurry and meet the new contrived deadline. And you know that proponents claim that there is a short four-year window before this building collapses, but they also claim that the building is completely safe. Lastly, you know that the people who are in charge of maintenance for this condemned building and the people, the same people who are in charge of burst pipes and collapsed ceilings now tell us that we should trust them to ensure our kids are safe. We all want the new school. We all believe it needs to be done. But like MESA, the process was broken from the beginning and was being misused politically. The misuse is designed to force the vote now before the election specifically to attack some candidates as anti-scholes. It's not even the first time. Some RTM members have publicly threatened me with removal for the past two terms. If you were on the RTM in two thousand and six or even in two thousand and thirteen, you've seen this movie before. Even the cast is the same. In two thousand and six and two thousand and thirteen, this procedural train wreck is heading straight for the fiscal cliff, soaking up your money for years to come and keeping other projects in limbo. Don't let this nonsense and nasty partisan politics succeed. Stand up to the name-calling and the bullies. Let's work together, build a great school the right way, the smart way, given enough time, the sensible way. Think freely, be brave, vote no.
Adam Leader? Pass. Anyone who wishes to pass can pass. Peter Quigley, to be followed by Christina Pochia? I don't know if I pronounced that correctly. Dan, everyone else out from, he has two minutes from here on out. Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator, colleagues, guests in the back. I'm Peter Quigley. I'm a returning member to District Three from three terms in District Seven, a member of the First Harbor Management Commission. Peter Quigley, not Dan. My comments are not to the merits, but I rise to vote no against this municipal improvement for new construction at both Central Middle and Old Greenwich until, until I hear, see, or am confirmed by town departments that more thorough soil testing has been done by the EPA oversight meeting federal EPA standards on the new municipal improvement school locations, particularly the new construction which may require hazardous environmental toxic cleanup. That soil testing to EPA Phase One and Two, maybe Three and Four, not to state DEP level Phase One. EPA approvals for shoveling ground, new construction of new design changes to footprints, and new playing field locations this year. Testing done by the EPA approval by Langdon, which is already being used up at the Western Middle School, very professional licensed environmental professional. Yes, both Greenwich schools need upgrade, but maybe only to renovation to existing structures, not new construction. Why? Three points of information, important points. One, it would be new construction requiring landfill into wetlands. Both schools are in two serious flood and wetland areas that may have been filled back in the sixties and seventies. Historically, maybe the same toxic soil fill chemicals as the high school from Metro North and Town Incinerators. Two, it would be new construction into, yes, a femur flood zone, next to a femur flood zone. I don't know if you all know about that. It's one mile up from the high school, and it's at the confluence of Brooks that feed into the high school area. You don't believe me? I brought my PowerPoint. Go down to Town Center and ask for Greg Sullivan at the IT Department. He'll give you four color maps, hydrology maps of the town of Greenwich.
Time. Thank you. Christina Pochia, to be followed by Janet McMahon.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Hi, sorry, I didn't write anything for this. My name is Christina Pochia. I'm in District Two. I'm a mom, uh, which is the number one important thing in my life. But, uh, on top of that, I'm an architect. I'm a designer. I head up a project management team, and I'm also a part of the Central Middle School Building Committee. Um, I joined the committee because I wanted to give our kids a really great school to come to, and I had entered into Central Middle School and realized that there was a lot of opportunity here. The, um, some priorities that I looked for when we were building, uh, or designing the Central Middle School was security, uh, safety, that we're giving the best, uh, um, design, uh, to, to lead through the education system for our kids. So when they come to Central Middle School, they're getting the best, the best experience possible. I think that we tried to do our best with working with the community to get their buy-in for what we were producing. I think we did a pretty successful job. Uh, we work with our neighborhood, uh, around the Central Middle School to make sure that we're getting their input. Um, I think, again, we did the best we could doing that. Um, I think we've reached a really successful design. I think it's very important to our community to build a great middle school because I think that, um, uh, you know, we want, the reason why I joined Greenwich and moved here, which was five years ago, is because I did it for the school systems. I think that providing the best education to my children is number one. My children are number one for me. And so I think that by not, um, approving this to move forward, uh, would definitely, uh, be a disservice for Greenwich. Um, I think that we've all worked really well together to produce everything and look to all sides of people who agree with us and who don't agree with us, and, um, try to put together, uh, something that would be best reflective of our entire community, not just one group. Um, and I know this building's going to serve the RTM. It's going to be serving a number of different communities. Um, and we tried to look at that as a whole, um, as we were putting the design together. Uh, I am very excited for what's going to come, and thank you all very much for this, so please vote yes.
Thank you. Janet McMahon, to be followed by Molly Salivi, and on double deck, it'll be James Waters.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, RTM members and guests. My name is Janet McMahon, and I'm tonight speaking to you as both a member of the RTM and as a Central Middle School parent. As an engaged parent watching this project closely through a town government lens, I submit that the entire CMS construction process has been actually delayed every step of the way. In April of this year, the BET cut the CMS budget from eighty-five point five million to sixty-seven point five million in a seven-six tie-breaking vote, a number that they knew was not feasible to construct this school. This then forced the Board of Ed to have to rewrite and then re-vote on new ed specs. Then the BET threw a curveball last month, requiring an MI to move the process forward. When that hurdle was overcome and the nonpartisan P and Z board voted unanimously to grant MI status, the process was then punted back to the BET, which thankfully voted eight, one, three, in a rare bipartisan vote when two members of the BET not running for reelection broke party lines. Also recall that between March and September of this year, four separate community engagement forums have been held to listen to the community's concerns about the construction project. If there were any neighborhood objections, they were, have already been heard, as there are now three neighborhood liaisons meeting weekly with the nonpartisan CMS Building Committee for over a year. So let's dispense with the disinformation, the distractions, and the delay tactics. This is a project that has been thoroughly vetted by dozens of industry professionals in construction, architecture, and project management, not to mention all of the relevant town bodies of all political stripes over the last twenty months. The people of Greenwich have spoken too. Across all districts, across all cross-sections of town, young, old, parents, retirees, all but two emails from almost seventy emails received support a new CMS now. You should too. Please do not delay this project any further and vote yes to item one.
Molly Salivi, to be followed by James Waters.
Hi, everybody. Molly Salivi, RTMD eight, the physical home of CMS. I look forward to voting in favor tonight. Family members attended this school in the seventies and in the two thousands. In fact, my parents had a son at Eastern and a son at Central simultaneously because it was Central that was tight on space, and our neighborhood was redistrict to Eastern where it still is today. When CMS closed in February of twenty-two and the rebuild was expedited to be the highest school capital priority, I was excited and expected it to move along easily. Last year, this body approved funds for urgent repair and A and E funding, and then some construction funding this past May. Tonight, we can approve the rest, and I don't find it rushed. We'd known it was coming. The divisiveness has been a disservice to the students, and I find it insulting to them. I don't believe a child's education is to be bargained when there are means to do better. And no, that doesn't make me a spendthrift or a supersizer. The new building supports the proven middle school team teaching model and with some flexibility. That's best in class, let's get it right the first time. It's really that simple for me. Most importantly, I haven't seen a single email outside of the RTM asking us not to approve this funding. It's the will of the people, the taxpayers, that we're charged with carrying out their wishes, and they've spoken loud and clear, and that's families beyond the CMS catchment too. I've heard from those in Glenville to the back country to the beach, and they've asked us to vote in favor. We are one community supportive of our students across this great town. Being a member of a building committee myself, OGS, I give another round of thanks to the very hard-working, indefatigable CMSBC, because I know what it takes to get it done. This volunteer job isn't always easy, is a tremendous kind commitment, and sometimes there's unwarranted skepticism and criticism which baffles me. And it has followed the BOE-approved ed specs as it must, so hats off to all of you from me and the students who will benefit.
James Waters, to be followed by Matthew Kane.
Good evening, fellow members. I'll be quick. I'm James Waters from District 12, and I rise tonight to give my unequivocal support for fully funding the Central Middle School project. As a CMS alum, we all know this school must be replaced and soon. There is absolutely no credible reason to delay. Delay will cost taxpayers more and negatively impact our kids. Many of the complaints we've heard tonight have been thoroughly discussed in public meetings for months. Let's be clear, apart from a couple voices, there is zero support in the community for making this building smaller. If there were, we would have heard many more opponents speaking. From my experience on the Old Greenwich School Building Committee, I can tell you with certainty that the estimated construction costs for CMS are directly in line with construction costs elsewhere in the state of Connecticut. We have known this for at least five months, if not longer. It would have been great to have replaced CMS years ago, prior to the recent and dramatic cost escalations and in a lower interest rate environment. But I don't have a time machine to take us back there. Waiting now only costs taxpayers more. We have a strong building committee in place, which this body approved, and we should thank them. Let's let them do their job and get this done. Thank you.
Matthew Kane, to be followed by Catherine Le Balbo.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Kane. I'm the co-president of the Central Middle School PTA, speaking on behalf of the organization this evening. In recent weeks, our members have been emailing, calling, making their presence known at public meetings, and speaking eloquently and passionately about their support for new CMS. We are extremely proud and appreciative of these efforts on behalf of all Greenwich School children. We urge your support for the funding of a new CMS building, specifically by approving items one to three on the agenda this evening. A new CMS is not a nice-to-have, it is a critical infrastructure update necessary to serve and protect our students and community and should be treated as such. All that remains for you is to approve tonight's CMS agenda items to allow this project to move forward, to maximize state reimbursement, and hopefully allow today's third graders to begin their middle school experience in a new building. It's been incredibly frustrating to watch the goalposts move on this project over the last year. I'm sure that among the very small number of speakers who have registered to speak against the project tonight, we have or will hear about their newly discovered love of rocks and trees, or that they alone care for the safety and well-being of our children, and that the numerous licensed, highly regarded professionals in our building committee are not to be believed when they say construction will be safe. These are not genuine, oh, actually, and if you want to hear about bullying, come find me after, and I'll tell you about the bullying that the PTA and its members have been subjected to about this project over the last year. These are not genuine concerns, as reflected by the fact that they keep coming up with new ones every time this project gets closer to approval. To quote Board of Ed Chair Joe Kelly, if you hear someone, actually, I want to write it down, I wrote it down, if you hear the word supersized, it's made up, they're not telling you the truth. You do not need to be among the 30% of Greenwich residents with children at GPS to support building modern schools. You do not need to be a CMS parent to support funding OG, JUC, or Riverside renovations. As a PTA, we are advocates for families, parents, teachers, educators, and students and the community at large. And good schools make good.
Catherine Le Balbo, to be followed by Larissa Struth.
I'm not going to accept the previous question, Ms. Nusinovich. There are about 15 more speakers. This is probably the largest item that has come before us in deference to our guests. I'm going to allow them to speak. Ms. Le Balbo.
Thank you. I appreciate your time this evening. It's a pleasure for me to speak to you tonight about what is not just my passion, but is also my profession. I am a registered architect. I have designed and built a number of public schools. In the state of Connecticut, I have worked on public schools, elementary schools, K-3 expansions. I've worked on the second-largest high school in the state of Massachusetts, the new residential colleges, which are known as Benjamin Franklin and Paulie Murray at Yale University, 500,000 square feet, $500 million. This is not that. This is a public school, and I'm here to tell you tonight that this school is appropriately sized and affordably priced. In 2018, a master plan study in $2021 suggested that this school's estimated cost would be $125 million. So when we are looking before us at an appropriation for a total cost of $112 million, I think that our building committee has done very hard work to get that job, to get that where it needs to be. I worked, I thought really hard about spending some time tonight to talk to you about the space standards, Connecticut space standards, but I decided I wasn't going to be able to do that in two minutes. So you all consider yourself very lucky that I'm not going to do that. It's space standards, and it is a space waiver to correct what was previously stated by somebody as a size waiver. That's not what this is about. There's programmatic space. That's how the state of Connecticut deals with things. At 81,000 square feet, it's a 10-by-12 room that we fit for per student. If we're looking at 660 students, that's 122 square feet of program space.
Thank you. Thank you. Larissa Struth, to be followed by Janet Stone McWigan. Is Ms. Struth here? All right.
I don't see her online.
Is Larissa Struth here? Okay, we'll go on to the next speaker. Janet Stone McWigan, to be followed by Frances Noebe.
So for the record, I'm Janet Stone McWigan. I serve on your Board of Selectmen. I'm going to be very respectful of your time tonight because not a lot needs to be said. It's time to get this school built. Please vote yes.
Frances Noebe, to be followed by Peter Berg.
Hello, this is Frances Wu Noebe. I am representing my three kids who attend this school and also all of the kids who you saw walking in this morning, this evening, who said, "Vote yes, vote yes for CMS." All of those kids are now sleeping, doing their homework, running to practice. I'm also representing Dina Urso, and I will represent her and her families that she represents as well. She's a current and future CMS parent, a lifelong resident. The CMS project is very important to her and her family. You'll see that it is bipartisan, it is a community effort. She's watched the project's progress from its inception, listening to and attending almost every single meeting, held on this topic as president of the PTA and for the last two years. It's not been a smooth road, sadly, but the community's support has been overwhelming from what we've here and what we've seen tonight. Delays and price escalation seem inevitable, and we saw the town really come together at the last BET meeting. This is your turn now. Their eight-one-three was extremely pleasant surprise. We cheered when we heard that news. Please do the same this evening. The fact that this project has become such a divisive issue in this town is sad to see. It's our hope that this body will vote in support of the appropriation and its accompanying items. The time has come to stop kicking the can down the road on school infrastructure. All governing bodies, before you have had robust discussion, asked the tough questions, heard the public comment, and voted favorably with few exceptions, drawn almost entirely on political lines. You can see, we can get along, you can get along too. Vote tonight in favor of this, in favor of our children. Please vote yes on these three items and take comfort knowing that an overwhelming majority of Greenwich will thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg, to be followed by Lauren Raben. Mr. Berg passes. Lauren Raben, to be followed by Dorothy Simone. Is Ms. Raben here? Oh, Ms. Raben? Ms. Raben, could you unmute yourself, please? Is she there? Ms. Raben? All right, well, we'll come back if she comes back. Dorothy Simone, to be followed by Lori Mulcair.
Hi, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Hi, my name is Dorothy Cassasari-Simone, and my son is in second grade at North Street. My daughter is seven months old, and I'm actually hearing her crying right now down the hall, so I'm going to make this very quick. I appreciate so much everybody's great support of this project. We've heard a lot from the opponents about the environment, and we all care about the environment and rocks and trees, and we all care about those things too. We've heard long-winded resumes about, you know, past work experience, but the fact of the matter is, we have to come together as a town and as a community, and we have to prioritize the safety of our children. That's it. The rocks are important, the trees are important, we all care about the air quality. But the bottom line is, our children have to be able to go to school every single day and live in a safe envi, or be going to school in a safe environment where there are no building issues and there's a security at the door. So I am in full support of Central Middle School. I urge everybody to please vote yes for this. I thank all of the supporters. And for the opponents, there's always going to be a better idea, there's never going to be a perfect plan, there's never going to be a perfect price. We could spend years coming up with different ways to do this, but the bottom line is, we don't have years, and our kids don't have years. Our kids have gone through so much already, so please, I urge you, vote yes for Central Middle School. Stop thinking you have a better idea. Please just do not delay this, this plan any longer. Now I have to go take care of my seven-month-old, my future CMS student. So thank you so much for your time.
Lori Mulcair, to be followed by Hector Arzeno. Is Lori Mulcair in the room? Ms. Mulcair, if you're online, could you please raise your hand so we can see you?
Can you hear me?
We can, yep.
Great, thanks. This is Lori Mulcair, District 11 resident and parent of future CMS students, and my oldest one is in second grade right now. I'd like to say, as a future CMS parent, I'm urging all of you to vote yes tonight and no more delays. Thank you.
Thank you. Hector Arzeno, to be followed by Rachel Kana.
They called me, but then they couldn't hear me.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, my colleagues in the RTM and guests. I am here speaking today in favor of the CMS interim funding with four hats, a past parent of the GPS, a current grandfather in the GPS, a member of the RTM, and one of the members of your delegation in Hartford. I would like to thank the members of the Board of Education, the CMS Building Committee, and the BET for your work and dedication. Now, it will be our turn, the turn of the Greenwich delegation, and we already started. There is a ton of work ahead of us if the RTM approves this funding, with the Department of Administrative Services and also with the Education Committee in Hartford, and this committee is a key one for the approval of any school construction grant. Your entire Greenwich delegation has been already in conversations with the leadership of this committee, and they are organizing a follow-up meeting with all interested parties for any day soon after today's decision. Two of the four members of the Greenwich delegation in Hartford are members of this committee, and let me add that any grant will be approved in bipartisan vote. This is how this committee function. I would like to add that inflammatory language by members, elected members, besides not representing as well as the community and not facilitating our work, the work of the Greenwich delegation. Those comments already reached Hartford. It is now how we function. Nowhere in the Capitol, inflammatory comments have a place. This is a written rule. So please, let's move forward. Let's send today a strong message. Let's work together, and please support our schoolchildren, our schools, and the work of your delegation in Hartford. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Kana, to be followed by Nerlin Pearson.
Good evening, Madam.
You may, you may speak.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and members of the RTM. I'm Rachel Kana, and I'm a Greenwich resident. I'm also the state representative for the 149th district, which covers parts of Greenwich and Stanford. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. When my family and I first moved to Greenwich over 20 years ago, the excellent school system, especially combined with low taxes, made Greenwich more desirable than the neighboring towns. We were, after all, moving to Greenwich with three young children and wanted to ensure that they would have the best resources available and that they too might one day choose Greenwich as their home. Currently, Connecticut public schools are ranked second in the country, and in 2023, NISH ranked the Greenwich Public Schools the number three best school district in Connecticut. Our schools are what attract families to our town and our state, but that will remain true only if we invest in our school buildings. The Board of Education has scoped an appropriate school that will serve our community, address safety concerns, and be a school of the future. We've known that Central Middle School needed to be renovated well before February 2022, when it was condemned and closed due to unsafe conditions. And though that should not have happened, we now have an opportunity to build a school that will address the needs of our town and families for many years to come. Future students are depending on this body to do the right thing. Now, it's Rachel Kana, like. To approve the funding for the construction of a new Central Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Nerlin Pearson, to be followed by Harry Fisher. Nerlin Pearson is passing. Harry Fisher. Harry Fisher passes, to be followed by Joe Rosetti, and then Stephen Meskers.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Joe Rosetti. I'm a Greenwich citizen and homeowner with grown children, and they're out of the school system. After 30 years of commercial construction experience as a construction manager, I retired in 2020 and now have the honor and pleasure of serving on the Central Middle School Building Committee. My comments are from my own perspective, not from the building committees. I'd just like to make one, a couple of points. Please, I mentioned many times tonight already, but please pay attention to the facts presented by the Building Committee via handouts, attending our meetings if you can, and the website. These are informative, and they identify the truth in a result of our democratic process, and that's a D with a small d, process. Regarding safety, I've been directly involved in managing many large projects immediately adjacent to other buildings, including student-occupied schools, such as the new and renovated Staples High School. It's about an $80 million job. Projects up at Yale, Stanford, and Griffin Hospitals with patients, apartment buildings and private residences. I'm confident that the Building Committee and our project team will provide a safe environment for students, staff, the community, in which the quality education at the existing school and all aspects of construction can be achieved through completion. The Building Committee listens to its constituents and votes on all key actions, just as you, the RTM, and all of our town committees and commissions do, and as you do here tonight. The Building Committee has studied, debated, and voted on wide-ranging topics. Virtually all Building Committee-selected actions have been approved by unanimous or solid majority of the Building Committee. I ask you to please support this appropriation and the bonding, and thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Stephen Meskers, to be followed by Stephanie Cowan. Stephen Meskers to be followed by Stephanie Cowie.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm here to speak in support of the Central Middle School building. There's a couple of things I'd like to clarify. One, Hartford does not hate Greenwich. I think that should be clear to all of us. Last week, I had the pleasure of standing with the governor in front of the Boys and Girls Club to deliver $6.5 million in bonding for the Boys and Girls Club and for the wonderful work they've done. Over the last couple of years, we've achieved a number of bonding requests. Thanks to the cooperation that I have for my delegation in the House, thanks to Hector and Rachel, we've worked assiduously to achieve those goals. I'm here as well to clarify any questions or any statements made. I speak for myself, and I speak for the delegation, and you've heard Hector. We will work tirelessly to get the bonding approved up in the Capitol, but without the authorization, none of it happens. And the delays in the authorization will delay our ability to go out to bid and will delay ultimately the construction. We need the approval of the, of the project, and we need it done soon. On a side note, you can expect I will never be sending you any notes from my desk with a survey. If I have questions to ask, then I think--
Mr. Meskers, let's just forget about that.
Thank you. I ask for your approval. Thank you.
Stephanie Cowie to be followed by Brooks Harris.
I'm going to go up. Coming, swear to God. Good evening. My name is Steph Cowie, a 23-year resident of Greenwich, and I serve as the First Selectman Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities, and I'm the liaison to the Central Middle School Committee. The CMSBC has been deliberate and thorough, follows processes, rules, and regulations, and never rushes to a decision. The CMSBC has been thoughtful in all decisions, all have been voted on by the committee. While every project has its distractors, this project has strong community support. The determination of the location of the new school, safety and accessibility have been the forefront of guiding this committee on every decision. They have dealt with a tremendous amount of safety stressors that encroach on this property, whether it's safety of children in place, pedestrians, roads, accessibility, cyclists, vehicles, trying to strike a balance. The new school's position provides sightlines of the entire campus perimeter, paramount to keeping our children and staff safe, adhering to Connecticut post-Sandy Hook School safety infrastructure standards, which is all-hazard safety framework. Additionally, safety and security for our students in place during construction is of highest priority. Students in place is most widely used, as seen with New Lebanon School, and is fiscally prudent. Turner Construction implements many mitigation actions and addresses all risk. And one last note on accessibility, there is a myth that ADA is simply wider doors and hallways. ADA accessibility is much more than that simplification. The new building provides a space where delivery of education can be received and experienced by all abilities, learning achieved with no barriers to those with disabilities. So I urge you to vote yes for items 1 through 3 this evening, tonight, in support of Central Middle School Building Committee work that they've done. And one last thing, a few things I'd like to add. The school is not being built on wetlands. That was something you might have heard this evening. That is inaccurate. And anyone that says that this was rushed in any way, shape, or form, also true. Thank you so much for your time. We really do appreciate it.
Brooks Harris to be followed by Claire Kilgallen. I'm sorry, Mr. Harris, are you passing? Claire Kilgallen to be followed by First Selectman Fred Camillo.
Good evening, Claire Kilgallen, District 4 resident, committee member of the Building Committee, and I'm here to pay it forward. As you might know, I served on the New Lebanon School. The wonderful result of that is seen. You should go see the building. My children asked me, why are you on this building committee? I'm here to pay it forward. I'm here to pay it forward for you and for everyone in this town to preserve the value proposition of what is great about Greenwich: services and schools, period. You have my commitment, you have the commitment of every single person on that building committee, that we are doing deep, hard work, probing questions, being thorough. If anybody knows me, I'm all about facts and details. If you ever have a question, we will answer it. Our duty, somebody is suggesting this is about politics, this is about time and money. It's our duty, under the charter of this town, to build this building. We're not the unbuilding committee, we are the building committee. We are the proponent for this project. We are not neutral. We're supposed to make the project happen, and we have moved forward with deliberation, and we ask for your support tonight on the appropriation. You have our commitment to continue dialogue. Please deliver an early Halloween treat to the children and residents of this town by voting yes on all the CMS items. Thank you.
Thank you. Millow to be followed by Lauren Raven, who has come back from beyond online.
Sure. Madam Moderator, members of the RTM and guests, I'll be sure. I stand both in strong support of this item tonight and also in gratitude to the Building Committee, the BET, and the BOE for bringing it to this point. We've heard, you know, discussions about size, cost, and the MI process, and that's nothing new to Greenwich. That goes back to when I was a kid back in the Morgana administration. That's what they were arguing about. But Grant, for all the projects, but Greenwich gets it done, and they're going to get it done here. Just a few years ago, the most heralded project in recent memory was the New Lebanon Building Committee, and that had to go back twice for MI. But they got it done, and it's a great school, and I know we're going to get it done here tonight, too. So again, thank you for all who brought it to this point.
Thank you. Lauren Raven.
Can you hear me?
We can, yep.
Awesome, thank you. So hello, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM, Lauren Raven, Selectwoman. I am the Board of Selectmen liaison to the Central Middle School Building Committee. I am also an alumni of Central Middle School, and I'll be brief. You've heard from everybody tonight, and I stand in support and urge you to vote yes on all the Central Middle School building items tonight. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Laura Costin to be followed by Leslie Moriarty. Is Ms. Costin online?
I am here, thank you.
Yes, okay, go ahead.
Moderator Vulgaris and distinguished members, my name is Laura Costin, and I am the Board of Education representative to the Central Middle School Building Committee. I am speaking tonight as the proud parent of two CMS graduates and two more future CMS students, one of whom will be attending during construction. I am speaking tonight in favor of the interim appropriation before you. I am sure that many of you have heard the saying that our budgets reflect our values. What would it say about our values if we were to have our students, year after year, continue to attend a school that does not conform to current building code standards, one that is prone to flooding, one with mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems that are beyond their serviceable life, and one which would require costly Band-Aids to keep the building safe? When it became clear that the building, a new building would be needed, the Board of Education took great care to develop education specifications that would support 21st-century learning for decades to come. When we were asked to revise the specs, we again worked together to find compromise solutions that would allow this process to continue moving forward. When the Building Committee was formed last summer, it immediately began its work pouring countless hours into this project for the benefit of our schoolchildren. It took great care to hire experienced professionals who would turn the specs into a building design our community can be proud of, one that our students can take pride in, and one that ensures their safety, also one that ensures them, assures them that their education is a worthy investment. I now ask for your support to fund this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Moriarty to be followed by our final speaker on this item, Christine Edwards.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and members of the RTM. First, I want to acknowledge the diligence with all of you, attention to your responsibilities as RTM members, truly as a resident. I appreciate that. I thought it would be helpful to explain why I voted in favor as a BET member and why I thought quick action was appropriate for this item. First, the design of the building meets the needs as identified by the Board of Education, and I'm, you have all heard about the team model, you've heard about the number of state mandates that require different and larger spaces in that building, and you've heard about the requirement or the request to keep the children in the existing building while the new one is being constructed. That caused an impact on the design and the site. But the other reasons are that the community really needed to know that this project was moving forward in a reasonable timeline. There was a lot of great concern by the kids and the parents, and I think you as RTM members, BET, and the Board of Selectmen needed to answer that question as quickly as we could. Third reason is the Building Committee needed to know. It was time and money being spent to develop a design that if this project and this particular design was not going to be supported, they needed to know that so they could pivot, go back to the Board of Ed, and figure out what the alternate plan was. It would have been a Plan B or probably a Plan Z, because the one in front of us met the needs and the requirements of the Board of Education in the best way. And the last item was a state reimbursement. You've heard from all three of our state reps that they are going to work diligently to get us confirmation of the reimbursement as quickly as we can so we can get started. When we put that shovel in the ground in October, the town will know what the level of reimbursement will be. Otherwise, we might have faced the decision of having to start the project without knowing if we were even approved for any state reimbursement. So your vote in support of the project tonight, we'll answer those questions. Thank you.
And our final speaker, Christine Edwards.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, our colleagues at the RTM, guests, and those who are watching online. I am pleased to be the last speaker for tonight, because this is it. We're going to vote, and we need to bring in the correct vote. I am speaking as a representative of the Grade 8 district and also a real estate agent who is seeing tremendous building going on, not only Old Greenwich, throughout Greenwich and Kos Cob. And I think we're going to have a lot more students, and therefore, the brigger plan that we have is appropriate. So all I'm going to say is, let's get this vote out. I'm glad I'm the last speaker, and let's just do it. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the debate for item number one, and we are now going to take up the second item in this combined calendar, which is item number two, the bonding resolution. Mr. Turner, I believe you're introducing that.
Yes.
Tony Turner, Chairman of the Central Middle School Building Committee.
Yes, Madam Moderator, with your permission, what I'd like to do is just read the first portion of the second item on the call and refer members to the remaining pages of the bonding resolution.
Sure.
Okay. To consider and act upon the following resolution requested by the Board of Estimate and Taxation: Resolution authorizing the issuance of $42,017,000 bonds of the town to meet a portion of the capital budget appropriation for the construction of the Central Middle School for fiscal year 2324, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose.
Thank you. May a member please move the adoption of the resolution. The item has been moved in second, and it is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, please? Beginning with Brooks Harris, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Hello. This item is debt authorization for the CMS proposed capital project. Mr. Menarski reminded the group that to approve debt funding, the charter requires a majority of RTM members to approve, not a majority of those present. So that means that we need 116 votes, not a simple majority of those present, as most other votes take. Mr. Menarski reviewed the terms of the proposed financing and discussed how the timing and sizing of issuing tranches is determined. This is something finance is very familiar with. We go through this discussion every time a bonding resolution is passed. This was consistent with those past discussions. He also discussed how the size of our borrowing would be reduced by any state funds offsetting our costs. You can't borrow more than you spend on a net basis. We were also familiar with that, and that was consistent with our understanding. Members were quite familiar with this structure, so we spent a little bit of time discussing the financial ratios and the prospects for debt going forward. As I mentioned earlier, it appears that we have the financial capacity, both from a rating point of view and from a repayment point of view, to support this debt. Finance voted 10-0-1, with one member abstaining. That member had incremental questions about this project and was prepared to vote yes upon getting that information. I subsequently talked to that member, and he's going to vote yes on this, so that would be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? I believe their education took it up, Legislative and Rules took it up, perhaps BOC. Stephen Rummond, Vice Chair of our Education Committee.
I'll tell you, it's great following Brooks. He gave a great summary, and to spare everybody time, we heard all the information about the bonding at the joint meeting that I mentioned to you earlier. We discussed it in our private education meeting, and the vote was 9-1-0 in favor of it, with District 10 voting no, and Districts 4 and 6 were absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee. To be followed by Lucia Jansen, Chairwoman of our BOC Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Fellow members of the RTM, guests, thank you for your attendance. Legislative and Rules participated in the joint meeting that took the first two hours of Thursday evening. Then we divided off into just the Legislative and Rules. We had eight districts in attendance. Districts 7 and 10 were absent. In the, in the course of the discussion in the joint meeting, one of the speakers was Mr. Menarski, and although he was commenting on item four, I asked him a question, and the question was, are the bonding resolutions in the standard form? Because as you know, they all require certain language and legal points covered, and we wanted to know if these were in that format, and he said, yes, they were. So when we got separated, we voted on item, on item two, vote was on legal order and on the merits, 10-0-0.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chairwoman of the BOC.
Hello again. We just recapped the Comptroller's reminder to the RTM that the CMS bond resolution will not pass without a majority of 116 RTM members voting in favor of the bond resolution. A motion was made, and the vote was taken. The BOC vote was 8-0-0, with District 1, 4, 5, and 8 absent. Despite voting against for the interim appropriation, District 2 voted yes for the bond, since she wanted to make sure that the project qualified for bonding if the interim appropriation passed. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a sign-up sheet, though. I don't know how many people actually want to discuss this. Mr. Turner, are you offering brief comments on behalf of the Building Committee?
Chairman Kelly and I yield back our five minutes.
Mr. Spilo, are you representing the opponents on this item? Okay. Christina Pochia, are you, pass.
Thank you again all. I have a minute more. There's a comment made, you are in wetlands, you're on the edge of wetlands in FEMA flood zone.
Mr. Quigley, just as a reminder, this is about the bonding resolution?
Well, it's tied in, is it not, Madam Moderator?
No, this is really if you want to issue bonds for this item or not.
Then I will pass.
Okay, thank you. Matthew Kane to be followed by Catherine Le Balbo. Matthew Kane is passing, Catherine Le Balbo is passing. Larissa Struth, who I think we couldn't find last time. Francis Nobay. Dorothy Simone. She was online last time, I believe, Jenny. Oh, right. She may still be indisposed. Hector Arzano, to be followed by Steven Meskers. Pass, pass, and Stephanie Cowie. Okay, okay. That brings us to item three, the third item on the combined calendar related to Central Middle School. May we have that resolution, please?
Yes, Madam Moderator, I rise to read item three on the call. To consider and act upon the following resolution requested by Superintendent of Schools and approved by the Board of Education. Resolve that the Representative Town Meeting authorizes the Greenwich Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the Central Middle School Replacement Project at the Central Middle School. Resolve that the Central Middle School Building Committee is hereby established as the Building Committee with regard to the Central Middle School Replacement Project at the Central Middle School. And finally, resolve that the Representative Town Meeting hereby authorizes at least a preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Central Middle School Replacement Project at the Central Middle School.
Thank you very much. May a member please move the adoption of the resolution. That item has been moved in second and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item? Brooks Harris, it looks like you're in suspended animation there. Are you going to the?
I'm just waiting to be recognized. I would not want to violate the procedure around here.
I think that's unnecessary. And Brooks Harris, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
RTM approval for item number three is required by the State's Division of Construction Services to be eligible for school construction grants for Central Middle School Replacement Project. A feature that I think everybody who supports this project is looking forward to very much. In our joint meeting, we heard from State Representative Meskers, who promised that if we gave him the authorizations, which I believe we will, that he will go up to Hartford and bring us back large piles of money. So we're excited for that prospect. Gilders, Gilders, Euros, Bitcoin, whatever you can bring back, bring it all back. And he also mentioned that if he's not successful, some unspecified individuals may torture him. So we don't want that. So please, please give us the authorization to get the money from Hartford. Finance took this up and voted 11-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Education Committee, Steven Rubin, Vice Chair of the Education Committee.
My goal is to give us the shortest read of anything. The resolution, as you know, is to be eligible for state grant for the building project. We voted in education. The vote was 9-1-0. Again, with District 10 voting no and Districts 4 and 6 were absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chairwoman of the BOC.
Okay, I just used up my time going backwards. So the BOC vote was 8-0-0 for this item.
Thank you very much. We do have a few speakers who have signed up. I don't know if they're interested anymore. Mr. Turner, are you, you're passing. Mr. Spilo. Larissa Struth, who I think we've established is not actually at this meeting. Francis Nobay. Dorothy Simone, who I believe we've determined is with her crying infant. Hector Arzano. Steven Meskers. Stephanie Cowie. Okay. That concludes our debate for these three items and will allow us to vote. Craig, could you please prepare the vote? This is a vote on Combined Calendar Group One, which are the three Central Middle School items. Items 1, 2, and 3. If you are in favor of these items, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. As a reminder, item 2 is a bonding resolution and does require a majority of the total membership, which is 116 people, to vote in the affirmative in order for that item to carry. Craig, at the appropriate time, could you open the vote started? Okay, you should be able to vote. You'll have two minutes. You have about 20 seconds to vote. If you have not already cast your vote, this would be a good time to do so. Is there anyone that's experiencing any difficulty with their clickers? Or may I close the vote? I'm not hearing that anyone in the room is having difficulty with their clicker. So I'm going to close the vote. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay, I have the vote on the Combined Calendar Group Number One. Those in favor, 179. Opposed? Opposed four, abstaining two. Those items have carried. That's now going to bring us to our second group of Combined Calendar items. And I would just caution people to not leave the meeting early because, or if you leave here to log on from home because Group Two also has a bonding resolution for the soil remediation. So we do need to have. I'm sorry? Did you show the vote? The vote was 179 in favor for, I'm sorry, yeah, four to two, right there. Okay. Could we please have the resolution for item number four? I believe that is Amy Seabert, who is online. Can we find Ms. Seabert? And if people could just take their seats, that would be helpful. Okay, Janet Stowe-McWigan, will you be reading that resolution? Okay, hang on.
All right. To consider and act upon the following resolution requested by the Commission of Public Works. Resolved that the sum of $750,000 be and the same as hereby appropriated to be added to the following account. B315-59600-24317, known as GHS Soil Remediation.
Thank you. May a member please move the adoption of the resolution. The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, please? Beginning with Brooks Harris, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Hello. Amy Seabert spoke at our joint session and updated us on the progress of soil remediation at Greenwich High School. We discussed how core samples were taken in a grid, but sometimes toxins are discovered in areas between the samplings and this necessitated additional remediation. This was particularly the case for PCBs, which apparently often appear in very localized concentrations. This will perhaps be the last, hopefully the last interim appropriation this week. But hopefully the last interim appropriation for anything that isn't covered by cement or asphalt. Finance voted 11-0-0 to approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's going next? Steve Rubin, Vice Chair of the Education Committee.
Hi. Item four was concerned with the appropriation of $750,000 for the soil remediation at Greenwich High School. Department of Town Services Commissioner Amy Seabert answered questions about the soil remediation and the need for the appropriation. Brooks actually covered a lot of what I wrote. So as previous, I'm going to just jump down here and not waste your time. We discussed the request in the joint meeting and then met privately to vote on these items. The vote was 10-0-0 with Districts 4 and 6 absent.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chairwoman of the BOC, for our final report on this item.
Good evening. We also participated in the joint meeting. I would just add, the other earlier reports were excellent. There was a question about Western Middle School soil remediation and that hopefully there were lessons learned so that project is expedited. The BOC has been advocating for this to be addressed and we are very hopeful that this Western Middle School is, has learned from the Greenwich High School remediation. The vote for this particular interim item for $750,000 was 8-0-0. Districts 1, 4, 5, and 8 were absent. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our committee reports. There are three people that have signed up, but I think we know where this is going. Larissa Struth, who we haven't been able to find all evening. Dorothy Simone, who has the crying child. And Francis Nobay. Okay. It doesn't look like anyone wants to discuss that item. So item number five is now before us and Janet McWigan. There you go.
Okay, to consider and act upon the following resolution requested by the Board of Estimate and Taxation. Resolution authorizing the issuance of $750,000 in bonds of the town to meet a portion of the capital budget appropriation for the remediation of Greenwich High School fields for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowing for such purpose.
That's good. You don't have to read the whole thing. May a member please move the adoption of the resolution. The item has been, the resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees, beginning with Brooks Harris.
Hello. The discussion on this item was exactly the same as the discussion on item two and we approved it 11-0-0.
Thank you. Steven Rubin, Vice Chair of our Education Committee.
Hi, the Education Committee took this up and voted. Our vote was 10-0-0 with Districts 4 and 6 absent.
Okay. Thank you very much. Kip Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee, to be followed by Lucia Jansen, Chairwoman of our BOC Committee.
Legislative and Rules took this up. Vote was 10-0-0 on legal order and on the merits. Districts 7 and 10 were absent.
Thank you. Ms. Jansen, Chairwoman of our BOC Committee.
Like the other related item, this vote was 8-0-0 with District 1, 4, 5, and 8 absent. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a speaker sign-up sheet. Remarkably, I think we know the outcome. Larissa Struth, missing in action. Francis Nobay, not here anymore. And Dorothy Simone, parent with the crying baby at home. That was it. So Craig, could you please prepare the vote? This is the vote on the Combined Calendar for Group Two. $750,000 interim and bonding for soil remediation at GHS. And as a reminder, we do need 116 votes in the affirmative to adopt a bonding resolution. If you are in favor of Combined Calendar Group Two, items four and five, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, could you please open the voting window? You have two minutes to cast your vote. And please do not turn in your clicker while the vote is open. Okay? Because you may inadvertently hit something. So everybody can wait two minutes. We'll announce the vote and then you can turn it in. You do not have your listening ears on. You have about 30 seconds to cast your vote. I would ask that the people who are queued up to turn in their clickers, make sure that you have not, while you're waving them around and queued up in line, inadvertently hit the wrong button. Okay? Do you have about 15 seconds? Okay, is anyone having an issue? Because we're going to close the vote. Okay, Craig, could you please close the vote? The results on Combined Calendar Group Two. Those in favor, 180. Opposed, one. Abstaining, zero. Those items have carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you in December and hopefully no interim meetings between now and December. There being no further business, the meeting stands adjourned.